All right. Good evening, everybody. My name's Craig Maladra. I'm one of the aldermen from the 5th Ward, and I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'd like to let the record show that all the aldermen are present. Let's just dive right into the agenda. Item 2 on the agenda. Approve Committee of the Whole Minutes from August 27, 2018.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. For item 3, Special Presentations, I'm just gonna turn this over to Mayor Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me okay? I do have a lavalier mic. Hopefully that's working properly. We good, Jim? This is like Frieder's phone. It's an inside joke, people. We'll explain that later. Mr. Perez. Where's Xavier Perez? Come on up, sir, to the podium, like you and I discussed. It's a pleasure to welcome you to the City Council Chamber.
Glad to be here.
These men and women are the City Council, and I know they share in my enthusiasm of welcoming you to the community. I have some little notes here about you. You're coming to Team GPD after working at Sky Naperville.
Yes, sir.
So you're the guy who threw kids into this air tunnel and made them fly, is that right?
It was actually a trampoline park.
Oh, well then, so you're the guy who threw the kids on the trampoline? Are you a gymnast yourself?
No, I'm a soccer player.
Well, I know that down here, but any passions about gymnastics at all?
No, just the athletic aspect of the job.
You were there for seven years?
Yes, sir.
What's your most memorable experience?
Probably having a cleanup throw-up.
You've chosen the right career, sir. Wow. Of course, ascended to the general manager position, which of course is an important position.
Yes.
You live in Warrenville?
I do.
These are the notes. Ready for this? He identifies playing and teaching how to play soccer and working out as hobbies and interests.
Yup.
What position in soccer is your position? And you played in high school and college?
High school, yes. College, no.
Did not play. And what's your most memorable experience of playing soccer for Wheaton, Warrenville?
Probably...
Don't say cleaning up throw-up either.
Nah. Probably say my first goal, or my first brace, which is when you scored two.
What's it called?
A brace.
A brace is when you score two goals?
Yes.
Who knew that? We're so excited to have you onboard. What year was that?
That was junior year in high school.
Junior year, okay.
Yup.
Wheaton, Warrenville High School. Then off to Lewis University. Graduate of 2017 in criminal justice.
Yes.
Why the passion for criminal justice?
I mean, I've always had a passion for, you know, being a good role model for those younger than me, since I personally didn't have a good role model in my community. So I just always wanted to give back to those kids that were younger and looked up to me. And just not only imply my passion for law, but also for helping out those that would look up to me.
And your desire to always be a police officer was something imbued in you as a young age?
No, originally I wanted to be a politician, actually. So, yeah.
Talking about cleaning throw-up. And so you had an epiphany.
Yes. And then I wanted to go into law school, but seeing that my parents had to help out, my younger sisters go through college as well, I was like, well, how can I fit both worlds? And here I am.
And this is it?
Yes, sir.
Would you do us the honor of introducing your fans who are with you this evening?
So I got my immediate family, and then my godsons and their parents, and my lovely girlfriend. Yeah.
Wonderful. Well, Xavier, it says here in the notes, and I don't know who typed this up, I'm assuming one of the commanders, or perhaps the chief. It says Xavier is not married.
No.
When the little men and women look up to you, what are they looking up to? When they see you, Mr. Perez, what do they see?
A focused young man who's determined to succeed in life.
And how do you define success?
Whether or not I can say that I did something that took me closer to my goal every day. And if I can't say that, then obviously it just wasted a day.
And your goal, I assume, is to always help people?
Yes, sir.
And be a role model?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. That's awesome. Any questions or comments from the City Council for Mr. Perez? When do you actually begin hitting the road?
So I start the academy next Monday. And then after I pass that, I should be on the road with my FTAO roughly December.
Do you know who your TAO is?
I don't.
Thoughts about Geneva that you didn't know? Questions you might have for all of us?
None. I've always been around like the festivals and that kind of stuff, and got to know the community that you guys serve, and I'm excited to work for you guys.
Work with us, right?
With you guys, yeah.
Absolutely. And we do have a City Council soccer team that plays every other Thursday? No one here has had a Bryce. Is that a Bryce? Oh, brace, sorry. I invite you to invite whomever you'd like to join you as we administer the oath. We're gonna move the podium, and please invite who you'd like to have by your side. We're gonna come up here, guys, okay? We're gonna have you face this way. The other way. It's a 90-day probationary period, my friend. You guys join Mr. Perez as you see fit. Are you ready, sir? Ready, folks? I kindly ask that you raise your right hand. And they're all raising their right hand. This is awesome, man. We just got three for one, Stephanie Warrior. Well done, man. That was awesome. I, Xavier Perez...
I, Xavier Perez.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer...
Having been appointed to the position of our... Yeah, position of police officer.
Excellent. In the city of Geneva, County of Kane...
In the city of County Kane.
...aforesaid...
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Geneva...
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Geneva.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer... And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir. Well, that's it, man. You may have signed some documents, of course, but... Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Well, actually, yes. Mr. Mike Frieders. If you are present this evening, we'd invite you to join us at the podium.
I don't know if I want to.
Now, everyone here at the council, everyone tuning in this evening, most people in the room know Mr. Mike Frieders. Mike, for the benefit of all of us who perhaps don't know your background and your affiliation with the city of Geneva, could you share that with us?
Well, sure. I've been employed with the city for the past almost 23 years. An officer, in total, almost 24. I love what I do for a living, and I love the city of Geneva, because I just work 24 hours a day, pretty much. On my off days, I work for the fire department, so I'm a part-time firefighter for the city as well. My family pretty much doesn't see me ever. We communicate by phone. And so I just spend a lot of time for the city that I really love.
Would you be so kind as to introduce your family to everyone this evening?
Absolutely. There's a lot of them, so my wife here sitting...
Just the important ones, Mike.
Then that would be my wife, sitting in the second row. My children. There's one in the front, there's one over there. They're kind of everywhere, because I have a bar. There's one in the second row, there's one in the fourth row.
Well, I met Mom.
And my mom is third row.
Third row is Mom, there she is.
My brother's fourth row.
From Yorkville, I believe, correct?
Mark.
Yep.
Yep, pretty close. Oh, from Yorkville. I thought you said Bill. I'm like, no.
No, Mark's from Yorkville, correct?
This is my goodie. Yes, he is from Yorkville. And then my mother-in-law, second row. And my brother-in-law, sister-in-law, second row.
Wow.
A whole bunch of my friends. My best friend from 5th grade is in that room over there. I won't let him in.
From 5th grade? This is the guy in the...
Yeah, so he's over there. My fireman friends are out in the hallway. They don't want to come in either.
I know they are. I know they are.
A whole bunch of coworkers and really close people.
They are close people. A couple of words I want to say about you that you're not aware I'm gonna say. But for those of you who attended a seminar slash presentation several months ago at Geneva High School, it was a presentation regarding the challenges of drugs and drug addiction, drug abuse, what have you. This guy was on the stage and talked about his work in the community and how you regularly, and for the most part anonymously, and without much attention to yourself or the work you do, help young men and women in this community and beyond, almost on a daily basis. And whenever people talk about the challenges we have in Geneva, we look no further than Mr. Frieders and the other police officers and firefighters, knowing full well that you are there on the front line. The stories that Mr. Frieders shared to the parents that night were incredible, to say the least.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
I'm honored to represent the department, the chief, my coworkers. The people I work with are outstanding. Like you said, there are always people standing and waiting, looking out for you, and the people that I work with are phenomenal.
Now, does this seem unusual to you that there's a lot of firefighters this evening? Or are they just kind of being nice to you?
It could be little column A, little column B. A little bit of both. But they travel in packs, so when one goes, they kind of all go.
Well, I was at the Festival of the Vine volunteering on Saturday, and one of your colleagues in the fire department said that, and I quote, "There has never been a stronger relationship between firefighters and police officers in the community of Geneva." And obviously, he was sincere about that. And he was excited to be here this evening. And this gentleman, Todd Loomis, has been with Geneva 29 years. Where's Loomis?
I'm hiding.
Well done. And I also understand via a break-in news alert on CNN, this past weekend was your wedding anniversary?
It was.
Yeah? How many years?
18.
Fantastic. And did you have a special celebration?
Yeah, we went to a lot of retirement parties. You know, we went to Target. I think we worked in a trip to Kohl's, but then we ran out of time.
Thanks for shopping in Geneva.
You can only give so much.
Mr. Frieders, I invite you to invite whomever you'd like to join you as we administer the oath of Commander of the Geneva Police Department.
My wife. I don't think anybody else, because they'd probably...
Are you ready, sir?
I'm ready.
Kindly ask that you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mike Frieders...
I, Mike Frieders.
Having been promoted to the office of Police Commander...
Having been promoted to the office of Police Commander.
In the city of Geneva...
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane...
County of Kane.
Aforesaid...
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Geneva...
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Geneva.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Commander...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Commander.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Commander. I made a joke earlier about Frieder's phone. Apparently, day one, Frieder's phone wasn't working. So tomorrow, you got a lot of messages, right? You got a lot of catching after you. Ladies and gentlemen, Commander Frieders. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the pinning of the commander. We've only lost three officers doing this. There you go. Mr. Robert Kenders. Bob Kenders.
Bring it on. Bring it on.
That slow gait is very...
I know you have a lot to say.
That slow gait... Actually, this is the first time meeting you. It's impressive. So, Mr. Kender, you prefer Bob or Robert?
Bob.
Bob it is. How long have you been with Geneva?
Geneva, 15 years.
Unbelievable, isn't it?
Yes. I'm bypassed.
So far, so good?
So far. Tell you after tonight.
And you have family and friends with you this evening?
I've got some immediate family, got some fire families, some police family...
Yes, you do.
Personal friends, some SWAT family. We packed it in for you today.
Never have we felt safer. And shout out to the work you do and your colleagues here in Geneva, and of course, all our friends on the SWAT team from Kane County. Extraordinary work. Extraordinary work. I understand you're one of the littlest guys on the SWAT team.
Yes.
Fair statement, or...
Very fair.
Very fair? And you like to work out?
A little bit.
And you work out here in town?
Yes.
What's your message for the younger people tuning in about staying healthy mentally, physically, and otherwise?
You definitely want to stay healthy mentally and physically, because 30 stinks. 40 stinks even worse. And I don't want to see what 50 is gonna feel like, so...
And how do you wrestle with sometimes challenging days emotionally and mentally after a tough day? And I know you've had some very difficult days.
A lot of it's just family. The family lets me vent, whether it's the police family, my personal family, or my friends. If you don't have anybody to talk to, it's gonna bottle up, and it's gonna fester, and it's not gonna be good. Being able to get out what's on my chest and off my mind helps a lot.
Perez, are you listening to this? Do your colleagues know when you need to talk?
It's more, would you shut up?
Let the record show. You always wanted to be a cop?
No.
You're not under oath or anything, but you can elaborate if you like.
Like every young boy, I wanted to play some kind of professional sports, but then at 5'8", I realized that wasn't gonna happen real quick or really easily. I knew I wanted to go to the service. And while at the service, I kind of liked the uniformity and the discipline. My best friend back there, he wanted to be a police officer ever since he was little, and...
No, wait, wait, wait. Frieder's best friend couldn't be in the building, so where's your best friend?
He got... Mine got here early.
Okay.
Living in the purple, Mike Pentecost. He actually works for Glendale Heights Police Department as a sergeant.
I met Mike earlier.
He always wanted...
What branch of the service?
The Army. I think it was a combination of what I taught from the Army, and then just hearing Mike all the time, being his lifelong dream. I knew it would fit, and it did. I've enjoyed it. I think I've done very good at it.
You have. Most memorable experience thus far?
That's easy. About a year and a half ago, um... One of the most impactful things that's ever happened in my career, I don't care if you were fire that day, police that day, or SWAT that day. We helped make one of the cities one of their darkest moments. We helped keep it from going pitch black. And I'm very proud of myself and everybody that was there that day. Hands down, that was...
It's still very raw, isn't it? What do you look forward to most as being a sergeant?
Midnight.
No, seriously.
I look forward to the opportunity that... All the lessons that I was taught, being able to pass that on and watch people, help them succeed in the career path that they choose over at the police department. It's very rewarding.
Indeed. And when the younger officers look to you, what do you want them to see and say about you?
That they were able to learn from all of my mistakes.
I have a list of them right here.
No, it's just... I could teach them a lot of life lessons and, you know, the do's and don'ts of the everyday, in and out. I've made everybody over there roll their eyes too many times, so... I know which direction to steer them in, because I've been in the wrong direction a lot.
Who's with you this evening?
For coming up here, I got my wife Tammy. I didn't invite too much more, because I knew the Frieders Army was gonna take over.
You got a lot of friends here, though.
Oh, as far as, yeah, friends, there's just...
And family.
Too many to name. Too many to name. I've got in-laws here. I've got my wife Tammy, like I said. Personal fire family, personal police family, personal SWAT family, so...
Well, we invite you to invite whomever you wish to join you while we administer the oath.
Tammy and Sergeant Dave Wolf.
Very nice. Hey, Perez, get up here and tell them what to do. Stand next to Tammy. Little God. Are you ready, sir?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert Kenders...
I, Robert Kenders.
Having been promoted to the office of Police Sergeant...
Having been promoted to the office of Police Sergeant.
In the city of Geneva, County of Kane...
In the city of Geneva, County of Kane.
Aforesaid...
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Geneva...
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Geneva.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Sergeant...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant. It's ear floor, man. Whatever you'd like. All these cameras are snapping. This might be the last time they see you all dressed up, man. Mr. Clint Montgomery. How are you, Clint?
Good, how are you?
Good. Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
It is good to be here, isn't it?
It is.
It's a big night. You've got lots of fans and family and friends here.
Do.
Would you like to introduce all your special guests?
Sure. Got my wife Rebecca over here.
Hi, Rebecca.
And then my daughter Caitlin, my sister Joy, my mom Stephanie, my mother-in-law Shawna, and my other sister Melinda.
So your journey through Geneva has been a good one.
It has been a good one.
And how long have you been with the force?
13 years with Geneva.
And prior to that?
Plain old for two years.
No kidding. So to the big city.
Big city.
Throughout those 13 years, what's the biggest change you've witnessed, experienced?
Biggest change?
Yeah.
Well, I've been investigations for the last two years... Three years or so. And pretty much everything is changing as far as our technical components, so I'm gonna have to be going back to the street. New computer system, new accident system.
Right.
All that kind of stuff. And there's suburbs, or there's, uh... Buildings going up and, you know, new homes, and I'm gonna have to get re-acclimated to the streets again.
My God, are there no windows in your office? You haven't seen the new building?
Well, yeah, I can see the Harrington. And that's about it.
So are you gonna be like midnight Bob?
I am. I'm gonna be the other midnight.
You're gonna be the other midnight?
Yep.
It's the Bob and Clint Show?
It will be.
Did you always want to become a police officer?
Not always. Probably around college.
Yeah.
Is when around 9/11 happened, and that kind of swayed me in that direction.
Is that right?
Yes.
Where'd you go to school?
Aurora University.
What was... Physically, intellectually, emotionally, spiritually, that drove you toward...
Yes. When that happened, people running away, police, firefighters going to... When that happened, people running away, police, firefighters going to the situation to help people is what drew me to that.
And I mean this completely respectfully, but there's something different about a firefighter or a police officer. What's different about you that you had run toward?
I think there's just an overall drive to help people, to be there for people, to make a difference, and I think that's what motivates me and my coworkers, is just to be the best we can and be a light for someone in the darkness.
That's a nice statement.
Thank you.
Who has been a light for you over the years?
My parents, my wife. My dad couldn't make it tonight, but he's definitely here.
Absolutely. Advice to the community overall, particularly the younger members of our community?
Just be patient with us, we're doing the best we can. And it's not a great time to be a police officer, you know, if you follow the media, but in our hearts, we're doing what we think is right.
Anything else, council members, or... We invite you to join whomever you'd like, or invite whomever you'd like to join you while we administer your oath, is that okay?
Yeah.
Awesome. Clint, I have a special request to stand more in the middle because apparently we couldn't see Frieders or Kenders, but hey, that's okay. You're going the right way. Yeah. Notice, where's Kenders and Frieders? Look, he's facing the right way. Please raise your right hand. I, Clint Montgomery...
I, Clint Montgomery.
Having been promoted to the office of Police Sergeant...
Having been promoted to the office of Police Sergeant.
...in the city of Geneva, County of Kane...
In the city of Geneva, County of Kane.
Aforesaid...
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Geneva...
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Geneva.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Sergeant...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant. This could be a first, folks. The rest is yours, record. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to begin the remainder of the meeting. We understand that many of you don't have to leave but want to. So, by all means, if you need to sneak out, we totally understand, so...
All right. Shall we resume? Hey, Mike. I guess not.
You're going to give it a smack, probably.
All right. We'll get started again, and we'll resume. I think before I turn that over to the mayor for special presentations, I probably should have apologized to those people, say what's about to happen next, it's not my fault. All right, items of business, number 4A. Let's begin with Mike. 4A. Recommend suspending the rules to permit Alderman Malaudra to be the cow chairman for this meeting and to vote on all action items on the agenda. Mike and Bob, all in favor? Any opposed? Now's your chance. Item 4B. Recommend draft resolution authorizing bid award and execution of a contract with patent construction in the amount of $125,833 for 2018 storm and sanitary sewer replacement project. This is for the removal and replacement of a storm sewer on Euclid east of Route 25 and a sanitary sewer main west of North River Lane between Ford and Stevens Street. I have a motion.
So move.
Second? Mike, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good.
There will be no discussion.
There will be no discussion. Sorry. Rich, would you like to say anything? Or Brian? I thought you were sneaking out with everybody else. Item 4C. Recommend certificate of completion for Delnor Family Residency Continuity Clinic. Motion?
So moved.
Mark, second?
Kilbert.
This is a certificate of completion for the public utility work on water mains, electrical improvements, and right-of-way improvements to accommodate the construction of the continuity clinic. Any questions? Took me a while, but I got the hang of it. Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What was it that I read in the packet about there being a 10% discount or something? Can you please explain that a little further?
We retain 10% of their bond so that if anything happens during the warranty period, we have the funds or the wherewithal to correct that if need be.
And so now, with the certificate of completion being approved...
We keep that 10% for the year warranty period.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. That concludes our items of business. We move on to item five, new business and public comment. All in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a shout-out to staff and Chamber of Commerce and all the first responders who used to be here on a fabulous Festival of the Vine. It was a wonderful, wonderful weekend, as always.
Okay. Any other items for new business? No. You guys? No. All right. Moving on to item six, adjournment, can I have a motion to adjourn? It's not rush. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that concludes the meeting, thank you very much.